Okay, so we are on Lister, right? And is that the one we've got extra paperwork on?
Continuals last time.
No, but I had some extra paper printouts from the email.
Oh yeah, we did get some stuff.
There it is. This one? No, it's not this one.
Needed.
Yeah, I got them here. Okay, are we ready to get started? Okay, so we're gonna pick it up and start with item number six, which is the appeal by Tamara J. Lister.
Are we gonna go back to the first item?
Oh, yes, we should do that, thank you.
So Gina's passing that out right now.
Let me give you a minute.
Sorry.
Feel left out.
We're in a hurry.
Did you get lunch?
I did.
Good job. Okay, when you're all ready, just let me know. So, just for clarity purposes, on item one, we had to do a few amendments to the resolution. So we are getting that resolution from Gina and we're reading what the changes were and then we'll be voting on that and then moving right back into the other appeals. We're not having the hearing all over again, we're just voting on the resolution with the changes.
That's good.
Are you all good?
Yes.
Okay. So I have to thank you for your recommendations and going back and making some slight modifications. I think it's important, as you all do, to have a clear understanding of what the entitlements are. So I think we're all really, I hope anyway, you're happy with the revisions that Peter and I have made. So, page one. Down on the highlighted whereas, towards the bottom of the page, Peter included the wording affecting the environment on that whereas, hopefully for further clarification regarding the addendum itself and exactly the purpose of that. If we don't have any issues, I'll move on to the next one. Condition two dash five. I actually included more of a description of each phase. Reading as follows, "The applicant shall comply with Exhibit A, mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Exhibits B and C, overall site plan illustrating Phase One, which includes a single-story 10,000-square-foot medical clinic with associated parking landscaping and interior road. And future Phase Two, including a 73,000-square-feet of future commercial with interior road system. And two, ride-in, ride-out encroachments onto State Highway 26 of this resolution. The future encroachments onto 26 shall be constructed with Phase Two," for clarification. Okay? Okay. And the last... The last one, I went ahead and made a slight change to the Caltrans condition. The first one on page nine. Nobody caught it before, but because I went back and actually reviewed, the previous resolution made reference to the encroachment in Phase One as well as the encroachment out on Phase Two. So I omitted the Phase One reference and it reads as follows, "The Phase Two driveways that shall be designated as ride-in, ride-out driveway along State Highway 26." Thank you for using your lunch hour to take care of that. And if you'll notice, the architects were able to revise the two site plans.
I'm very impressed.
Bam, bam. So was I, frankly, I figured he went to lunch and I was gonna be out of luck. But nevertheless, they've been revised to also illustrate that the encroachments are now part of Phase Two and that neither of those encroachments out onto the Highway 26 are a part of Phase One. In addition, just for further clarification, I have requested a full set, large-size copy set of these plans for which we will stamp as approved as of this date. Great, thank you. All right, so are there any questions of Gina? Or are you guys ready to make a motion to approve the resolution?
Just compliments.
Compliments, we like those.
Thank you for your lunch hour.
Well, then I would... Can you read the resolution for us, the recommendation? Sure. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission pass a motion to sign Resolution 2018-2027, approving the plan development permit 2018-018 for the Mark Twain Healthcare District, based upon the findings contained therein, as modified. Thank you, can I get a motion?
I second.
Okay, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. That was Karen and Tim? Yes, Karen motion, Tim second. Thank you.
And that action's final in 15 days unless appealed to the Board of Supervisors.
I don't think it's gonna get appealed. But you've never, I've seen other things happen, so who knows? Okay, now we'll go to item six, 2016-703. And it looks like Ben is gonna be our presenter on this one.
Yes, this is Appeal 2016-703 by Tamara J. Lister, appealing to the denial of medical cannabis cultivation registration application 2016-703. Since we've been through most of this already, I'll try to keep it brief. This site is located out at the end of Story Road in Mountain Ranch. As you can see, Salamander Creek goes straight through the parcel. This application was denied for failing to comply with 1795-165E of the urgency ordinance specifically as it addresses the environment for grading after May 10, 2016, both in the portion of the parcel designated as the cultivation area and it resulted in expansion of the cultivation site, violations of other state and local law, specifically the county's grading ordinance, Chapter 15.05, and multiple sections of the California Fish and Game Code. Here we see the cultivation site on May 1, 2016. You can see it's somewhat amorphous in its shape and the cultivation branches from top of the area all the way to the bottom are corrupted and relatively follows the contour of the land. And it doesn't appear to change much between June and May or August. And then June 2, 2017, the cultivation area has been completely cleared and two terraces have been installed on top of it. Here you can see the terraces better as they've been fully planted out with the smart pots. And as opposed to the original cultivation area that spanned all the way from the top of the cultivation area to the bottom, you can see it's clearly bisected by a significantly large terrace. And here we see the cultivation areas from 2016 overlaid onto 2017, see the difference that occurred. And here is a picture from a flight from the sheriff's office of the terraces. You can see some erosion occurring right there. And it's worth noting that there was no grading permit for this grading. Had there been, the necessary erosion controls would have been put in place. On September 15, 2017, code compliance visited the site. Here you can see the road leading up to the cultivation area, the culvert that is supposed to drain back into Salamander Creek, but just drains back out onto the road that was cut through Salamander Creek. Here's the generator for the well. Cultivation area, you can see the fill slope of the upper terrace right there. Another shot of the fill slope. Here we can see the road going straight through Salamander Creek. And on October 30, 2017, in response to a violation of forest practice laws from CAL FIRE, Fish and Wildlife visited the site and it resulted in a notice of violation issued on December 14, 2017. Here you can see some of the vegetation along the creek bed was removed. Some logs and sediment were placed in the stream bed and along the edge and in the stream bed, you can see an impaction of the bank. And here we can see more removal of vegetation and the bank being impacted into the stream. And here, the trailer on the site draining just into a hole, some garbage. And I recall last time, there was a question whether or not staff was able to get the CAL FIRE notice of violation, and we were. That was forwarded to all of you, if you didn't get a copy, I have some here. And also some clarification from senior biologist or senior environmental scientist Caroline Peterson, who was present at the October 30 site visit done by Fish and Wildlife, just confirming that the notice of violation was issued due to the damage that was observed as there were some concerns whether or not environmental damage had actually been accomplished.
The only question I have is that that last letter from Carolyn Peterson refers to Salamander Creek and Wet Prong Salamander Creek. Do you know what we're dealing with, with each of these pictures? I mean, not that it might make any difference.
Yes, this is Salamander Creek and this is Wet Prong Salamander Creek. They meet right at the bottom of the parcel, which would be right about this area.
So the pictures that we have here would be Salamander Creek, not Wet Prong Salamander Creek?
Yes, they'd be Salamander Creek.
Thank you.
You can see here the wet pronged branches ever so slightly before.
Thank you.
Okay, so if nobody has any further questions, I'll bring the appellate up.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Is everybody's lunch okay?
It was, how about yours?
It was good.
Good.
So, the... Down at the bottom, down there? Where it was cut off?
Yeah, can you state your name for the record, please?
I'm Tamara Lister and this is my brother Vince Culpepper.
Okay, thank you.
And he's the one who does that one. He's the one who does all this, so he can go ahead and tell you.
Well, I had an engineer go out there and we had him go out there back in January and he said it was a runoff, it's not even a creek. And that road that was down there towards the bottom, I didn't even make that road. That was, I have neighbors that's... That go through there and his kids live at the bottom. I don't even go through there, I'm up at the top. So, he owns a bulldozer next door, not me, I don't own one. He made that, not me, I didn't do that.
And he lives up there.
And he lives up there. And I really didn't do that.
And you're talking about the part that's bare earth that's... That is across the line?
We're talking, yeah, down at the bottom, down there at the creek. I just got a letter today from Fish and Game.
While we were out here?
While we were out here, it just came in the mail. My wife just called me and sent me the email saying that we have up to 60 days to get this fixed, or...
To remove any garbage or anything like that and...
Cause it's been like a...
We just got it through the texting, so we didn't get to read every bit, but there's three pages of what needs to be done or whatever. And also the logs in the creek? There's so much that has fallen from the fire.
It was from the fire, like a lot of that was from the fire. I'm sorry, a lot of it was like from the fire, cause the fire came and then after fire, the flood comes. That's what was happening with my hill, everything is falling apart. It's not corroded, it's just the rain is just taking it out.
The indention on that, on the side right there, that was from the landslide, that big old gash? There was...
Yeah, that's from the water.
Water, it just went everywhere. There was trees at the top falling over.
Yeah, that fell onto the...
I mean, what are we supposed to do? Like, that's not our fault that they're falling over.
It was just that fire killed us over there and then, cause it's really dense over there, it was. It was really nice there and then the flood. And then I didn't expand it though, it says that I expanded. It was actually...
They have...
I got it at...
19,000.
19,000 square feet.
But we're only using 10,000 of it or 18 or something?
18,000.
Yeah.
But you shifted it, right? I mean, you shifted some...
No, I had, okay, so basically around the side, everything was in the ground, there was no pots. So I got a letter from Calaveras County Planning Department, this was...
That's that pot right there?
Yes, that is.
Yeah, but the first pictures that he first showed you?
Like all that, before all that, it's in the ground.
Like those are in the ground, the first ones from May?
Yeah, and so I don't grow over there. And all that, all I did was I filled all of it in and I put it in pots.
Can you possibly use one of the red arrows?
Okay.
I really don't know what spot over there is.
Okay, I'm sorry, right over here? All this right here is not a growing area. This is all in... In the ground, all this. And so I got a letter saying that shows the boundaries of the cultivation area and establishes approximately 19,000 square feet. But now it says I'm at 18,000 square feet. So if I was to have excavation and risk losing my license, I would at least do it at 22,000 square foot, which I pay my taxes on. I wouldn't have did it under, I would have did 22,000 square feet.
And you're actually only growing in 10, right?
No, he's saying I'm growing in 18,000.
But you're...
But it says you can fill into developed areas within the 19,000 square feet and previously did not cultivate, but cannot establish development. So, I mean, all I did is I filled all that out, I just scraped it all in, just put, filled up the holes and everything.
And then used pots this time.
And then we switched to pots. It does look a lot more cleaned up, cause it is a lot more cleaned up, I did clean it up. Everything was washed away. I didn't come in with an excavator and do what they said I did.
When we left here the last time and we continued this, we did that because you had met with an engineer?
Yes.
That was gonna bring us proof to tell us that that was not a creek and that you did not damage anything in the stream.
Yeah.
Yes.
They're playing tag right now, it's not even me, it's the...
That's who he was on the phone with out there.
That's who I was talking to on the phone out there, he's on Mountain Ranch Road. It's the... What's the people that came?
The fire game?
No, Fish and Game is playing tag with the engineer. He's already got all the paperwork, he has to email it to them and then they have to email back to him and then they need to take care of it.
And he said he's trying like...
I have his number, I got his company name, I've been in contact with him, I just talked to him right now.
So he'd answer his phone?
And then I just got the letter right now from Fish and Game.
While we were here.
So you're saying that you did not damage the creek bed, your neighbor did it?
Promise, I didn't, why would I, I wouldn't risk my license. This is everything I got, I put into this.
First of all, there's no reason, like, what, for what?
I'm way up here on the top, I wouldn't go down to the bottom.
There's no reason, it's way down across, across from, there's no reason to.
How do you access your property, through that road from the bottom?
There's two, there's Salamander Creek and Story Road.
Story, and we go down Story.
Yeah, Story Road is a... It comes up through this right here, you can't really see it, but it goes up right to Story Road.
And that's how we get to it.
I got some really crazy neighbors, they've been there for a million years and he just runs wild down there, basically. I've already had some of my stuff broken into and all kinds of stuff over there.
Okay, so where is the road cut in at that they're talking about?
Okay, let's see, there's... This is a road right here, this is a road.
And where does that go?
This goes back like this and then that's my neighbor's property, he owns 30 acres. And it goes all the way to the top, which is West Murray Creek Road? Yeah, West Murray Creek Road. West Murray Creek Road, you would turn right on the Salamander and you'd come right down, right here like this. And this goes, you see how this is, you could still get down right here? And that goes all, I don't even know where that goes, I've never been down there. But the neighbor, the mother of his kids live down there and he always goes through there.
Okay, so...
And there's another piece of property right past mine, another gentleman, I didn't really get his name, I only talked to him one time, I can't remember, it was a while back, but he always goes through there too.
Okay, so who's growing there in the right corner?
Right there?
Nope, go down, down and over to the right corner, there you go, whose grow is that?
Oh, there's no grow over there, I'm not sure.
That's not even...
I got, yeah, there's pictures of no grow over there.
And do we not have pictures of that being an expanded area?
No.
That's not...
No, that's, that's not, I'm over here.
There's one picture where that spans the border, that one.
Yeah.
That's not a grow area, I did not grow over there at all.
What is that area? There's a trailer or something on it?
Yeah, it's just a little pad up there, yeah.
Yeah, there's no nothing up there, nothing, it's just nothing.
Yeah.
How'd it get there?
But it...
How'd it get cleared, how'd that get there?
From the neighbor.
Is that the link to your property? Is that the top?
Yeah, I think it is the top, I'm not sure exactly where that is. But that's right about where his property is, right there, so...
Now, that picture that you said, well, it was just water and they're claiming erosion, which seems to be the same thing.
Yeah.
That, to me, demonstrates a considerable amount of grading. And did you have a permit for that?
What was that?
Did he terrace that?
Yeah, I mean, that's where the difference between 2016 and 2017.
Did you do that terracing?
No, I didn't, I just cleaned it up. I just graded it more, you know, just scraped it around.
But earlier, it was scraping it around can end up being grading. Earlier pictures show...
I just got a backhoe.
The plants that you indicate were in the ground?
Yeah.
Cut across that entire area, including the part that's at a very steep slope that then eroded. And so it's hard to believe that there's not been grading between this picture and then the picture that was taken from the sheriff's, not the... That one.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that looks like a 20-foot difference in the terrace and there's no way you could be planting plants in the ground.
That picture right there is nice and close though and the other pictures are really far zoomed out. You really can't, I mean, I can't really tell that much. If they would've got maybe a nice closed one before, we would definitely be able to tell, it'd be no question asked, right?
How high is that terracing?
I've never measured it, I don't know, I never...
You can climb up it.
Yeah, I walk up it.
Yeah. You can walk right up it.
Are you saying you had plants planted on that slope before?
No.
No, not the slope.
No, no, just, just, it was all in, in the ground, remember it was in the ground?
Yeah, I know, I know.
So I just filled it in and put pots and made it look more...
But see here, they, those areas are all connected by areas that are, that are, that have plants in them. And then you have this, then you have the terracing where I don't see how anybody could be planting any plants in a slope like this.
Yeah, no, I'm not planting.
I know you're not, what I'm saying is that there's been grading between this picture and...
I don't have that in the slideshow. Sorry.
Why do we have it and you don't?
There's many more pictures available than I can fit.
Well, this, this particular shot appears to show the teeth, probably a backhoe or excavator, I can say. Digging into the side of a hill. And it's dated September 15 of 17. So I think that'd be an important one to ask him about, do you happen to have that? Color right there? If you can't display it, will you show it to me?
I got that picture right here.
All right.
So...
So what do you think that shows?
That looks like teeth marks from a backhoe.
Okay, did you use a backhoe on that parcel to grade it or to scrape it or to whatever you were doing?
No, I did, I did have the backhoe up there, I scraped it a little bit.
Is this what you mean by scrape it?
Yeah, yeah, I did a little bit. Yeah, I didn't, like, it's the two terraces though.
When did you do that?
Yeah.
That was a couple of years ago though.
That's interesting, huh?
What, yours is 18?
Well, this picture is September of 17.
Yeah, they never even came to my property until now.
Well, just a minute though, if you look at that picture, you'll see the tooth marks?
Yeah.
From excavator backhoe.
Backhoe.
And in the meantime, if you, if you did it before May of 16?
Yeah.
Certainly there would have been rain.
Oh, yeah, all kinds, yeah.
We had lots of flooding and everything and that rain would certainly have eliminated those claw marks, so...
Yeah, I mean, I still got claw marks up there right now, you can see in the rain.
I don't see how you could say that that was not...
Yeah, should've got pictures for you, previous ones. That's still there.
Okay, so any other questions from the commissioners?
You don't have anything to establish the, your engineer's opinion contrary to Fish and Game that this is a creek?
No, the engineer already said it's not a creek at all, it's a runoff. I got his business number and name.
No, he's not here, so we don't have that established.
That's because Fish and Game is taking so long to serve me this paper.
No, he could be here.
Yeah, he can, I told him, he's out here. And Fish and Game could have served me the paper a long time ago and could have had this sort of taken care of, if they would just do what they have to do together. I mean, he could be here and Fish and Game should, you know? And it's not like I even did that down there, they're just saying that I did just cause there's two other people live over there, what if he did it? Or what if he did it? Why did I do it? I'm not, I'm not growing weed down there, I'm up here on top. Why would I be down there destroying, risking my business license?
So the department...
In a little bit of water around.
Yeah.
The Department of Forestry says that you showed him, as in Mr. Culpepper, showed him two clearings where marijuana was being cultivated. What two clearings would that have been?
Right there?
The two areas?
The terraces.
Terraces.
And the clearings were bisected by a class-two water course and both clearings drained into Salamander Creek. Can you put the creek lines back up, please?
Are they saying I'm too close to the creek?
Well, the water...
Cause the water board had to come out and prove me for that.
And they said tier two was cleared.
I got a picture of me measuring it.
And the letter from the water board saying that...
And the letter that...
Tier two is approved.
Yeah, and this was back in...
So you got a tier two, not a tier three?
No, there's not three tiers, there's only two that are rowing.
No, no, I thought you meant your water, water resources license, your water board.
Oh, yeah, we got a three.
That's what I thought, okay.
A three, yeah, right?
So you realize that means that...
$2,500 one, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so I'm gonna try and move things along here because we seem to be at a stuck spot. I don't, unless you've got more evidence that you can present to us besides verbal, anything in writing, any documentation and evidence and facts, that's kind of what we need, what we're looking for. We don't have a whole lot to go on except for Fish and Game wrote the letter, CAL FIRE. CAL FIRE, excuse me, not Fish and Game. And do any of the other commissioners have specific questions for them at this point?
Not at this point.
Okay, so I think what I'm gonna do is if you don't have anything further you wanna say, if you do, you still have a few minutes left, you can make your statement.
Yeah.
Then when you're, when you're done, I'd like to just make sure there's no public comment.
Okay, so you want, I get proof from the engineer, is that what you'd like me to get?
That's why we gave you a continuance, was to bring us proof. And that didn't happen, that's what our concern is.
We could just do the public hearing and get on with this.
Okay. Okay, is there anybody in the public that has any comments they would like to make? Okay, seeing?
Yeah, I mean, now, let's give this guy's license back. He only put two hundred fifty grand into it. He's about to lose. Takes about three years for a business to get on its feet. Now it loses everything.
Okay, um, so I'm gonna close public comment now. I'm gonna bring it back. Do you have anything you want to rebuttal?
I do not.
Okay. Um, since there was no public comment, and he has no rebuttal, there's not anything for you to rebuttal on. I will close the hearing, bring it back to the commissioners, um, for deliberation.
I don't see where we have anything more now than we had at the last hearing. And, uh, I, uh, I think especially with the, well, we do have, in that we have the letter from Forestry and Fire Protection and the letter from Fish and Game, Fish and Wildlife, uh, which tend to substantiate the, uh, the position of the department. And I think it's quite clear that there was major grading that happened after May tenth. And that, uh, I just can't accept the, uh, the verbal evidence of the appellant. So I affirm the denial.
Yeah, I agree. I think the evidence is pretty strong that there was significant amount of grading. Just cleaning up with the backhoe, that's grading. And I suspect it was more than just cleaning up. The evidence shows that you did it, and that's against our urgency ordinance. I support the planning standpoint.
He didn't bring back any of the evidence that we gave him the continuance for, so I'm gonna back the planning on this one.
Well, what I think I heard was that he did not do any of the excavating on the wet prong Salamander Creek, which isn't on his property, that his neighbor must've done it. But he has said a couple of times that he did not do it, and why would he do it? And since he doesn't use that road for access, it wouldn't make sense for him to excavate that. It wouldn't do him any good. So I don't think I'm prepared to sign on to a resolution that includes that as one of the violations. We don't have any direct evidence that he in fact did it, and it makes sense that he did not do it. I do agree with respect to the grading. There was a lot of it. It's obvious from the pictures. It's post-May ten, twenty sixteen. The terracing had to have been done by hand. The hill didn't just fall down by itself. And so I do think there's been a clear, clear grading violation.
While you're pondering...
Go ahead.
The, the comment that he's saying that he didn't do it, it was the lower-level people that did it, is probably right. However, he admitted to the Cal Fire people that he had dug up the water course with his backhoe and filled it in with soil. So some of the story that he's telling us is totally inconsistent with what he told Cal Fire. I think maybe, maybe, maybe he did do it. I think the evidence supports the planning department's position.
No, we're, denial is a denial, and the grading violation is so clear that I wouldn't object to taking up the, the water course violation. Somebody has very much violated the, the water course. And, uh, uh, if we were charitable, we could say that there's some question as to who did that. So I, I wouldn't object to taking that particular charge out of you.
If it's okay if I interject, um, the landowner is ultimately responsible. And whether or not it was some other third party that did the grading, the, the reference to the wet prong was, uh, in the email from the biologist from Fish and Wildlife Department that the, both prongs, both the main stem and the wet prong, um, have aquatic species in it. And so it was a, a stream of importance. I can't remember the technical term that they used, but it was something that they have jurisdiction over. That was the only reference to wet prong, was that both the wet prong and Salamander Creek have aquatic species that are under their jurisdiction. The grading that occurred on the property was what we were concerned about. And the, um, the registrant is Ms. Lister. Uh, and she is ultimately responsible for ensuring that activities on her property, where there is a cannabis cultivation, um, follows the rules. And whether it was a neighbor that did it, and she didn't do anything to stop it, or to have him, uh, correct the situation, to me, that is, um, equally, um, important in our action that we took.
And building upon that, also, it's, it's admirable that these two agencies are out there being watchdogs. And we probably shouldn't just ignore when they go out and they actually find something. We shouldn't treat it as inconsequential to our proceedings.
Okay. I guess based on that, we could go ahead and read the resolution, please. Recommendation?
Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the Resolution twenty eighteen zero three nine, thus denying Appeal twenty sixteen seven oh three, thereby upholding the Planning Director's denial of Application twenty sixteen seven oh three.
Okay. Is there any changes that you guys want to make to it, or...
Uh, oh, yeah, on page three of the resolution, up on finding number four, I, I don't understand the word explanation at the very beginning there. Other than that, I don't see any.
Page three, explanation O.
I think we distracted that word.
Okay.
With that, I move that we adopt the resolution as amended.
Well, let me, let me make a couple of suggestions on the resolution because I think this one is different than ones we've seen before. If you assume that the applicant bears responsibility for what happened on wet Salamander Creek, what we have here is, is not just a, uh, activity that threatened the environment and could harm streams and wildlife. We have activity that did. And so at the top of page two, that sentence, I would change it to read, "The cannabis cultivation site was conducted in a manner that harmed streams and wildlife," because it did.
Streams, fish, and wildlife?
Don't know if there's any fish there, but...
I don't know either.
It's certainly wildlife. I mean, the biologist reports, he's talking about frogs and salamanders. Would that change him?
Okay, so everybody good with that? And we have a commissioner pondering it.
It's certain of harm. I'm not quite sure. Do we have evidence that it actually harmed?
The evidence, as stated right now, says it, it endangers, so...
Endangered.
We would have to change the evidence. Uh, if, if, indeed we have evidence that there was harm.
Well, we, we actually do have evidence. Um, the, you've got the CDFW notice of violation, and you have the communication from the California Department of Fish and Wildlife of May eleventh, that where, you know, they excavated the channel and they put, somebody put fill and logs in it. Well, that's certainly damaging the stream. And there was a lot of sediment went in the creek. That's damage, harm. And you have evidence that both water courses contained equiotic biota indicative of the presence of higher-order species such as frogs and salamanders.
So...
That's, we have that.
Just to make it simpler, why don't we use the same word that Fish and Game used, and instead of threatened or harmed, use the word endangered?
Well, because our ordinance talks about harm.
Okay.
So the evidence is that it endangered, or that it threatened or harmed, or was just some danger?
Well, it certainly harmed the stream. There's no question about that. And from Fish and Game, we have evidence that there is wildlife in that stream. And sediment's not gonna be helpful to them.
As long as we change the, the language under evidence to fit what we have up above. I mean, in this case, there was actual harm. It doesn't mean that you have to find actual harm in order to find a violation. With the ordinance, I wouldn't have any effect on what you're proposing.
We have a difference of opinion on that. In this case, it doesn't matter.
Right, exactly. And so what would you suggest the last sentence under evidence, uh, read?
May I suggest?
Well, I would just add something like this. The CDFW notice of violation and the communication from, um, California Department Fish and Wildlife of May eleventh document harmed the streams and wildlife by excavating the channel and of wet prong Salamander Creek and placing fill and logs within the channel, delivering large quantities of sediment to the Salamander Creek, and ongoing erosion, causing impact to the water courses. And both water courses contained aquatic biota indicative of the presence of species such as frogs and salamanders. That's right in the May eleventh communication. That's the evidence.
Yeah, I'd agree with that.
Did you write all that down, Ben? I didn't write it down.
Well, we, we, we have it in writing. We could just plug in the language from their e, Fish and Wildlife email into the resolution.
Right.
So it's premature in my earlier motion?
I don't think so.
I don't either.
I mean, now, if we're gonna do that amendment, the motion remains, the wording of the motion remains the same. The result is different. I, anyhow, I move that we, uh, approve the denial of the permit where the resolution has amended.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries by vote.
And this action is final unless appealed to the Board of Supervisors within fifteen calendar days.
So am I gonna appeal it?
You can, if you want to, to the supervisors.
Okay, then, so what do, what do we have to do after we...
So what I'm gonna ask you to do is to go over to the Planning Department and discuss with them, how do you file the appeal, and what would you need to do?
Okay, what we need to do to fix it, so we can get our...
No, appeal our decision.
They didn't, we've denied your appeal, so the Planning Department's decision to deny it is standing. But you have fifteen days from today to appeal it to the supervisors and say, "The Planning Commission was wrong. We want you to overrule."
Okay.
So you'd have to get evidence together to prove to the supervisors.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. And... So we'll go on to item number seven, Appeal by Ryan and Laura McFlur. And it looks like Miguel is presenting this one. And this one was continued from May tenth also. We're ready. Sorry, I thought you were getting ready.
I was waiting on you.
Sorry.
So good afternoon to the Planning Commission. This is Miguel. I'm here to present Appeal two thousand sixteen dash nine five seven. The cultivation site is located at four nineteen Hudson Road in Copperopolis. Uh, this appeal, or this, um, project was denied for various reasons. The first reason is, uh, a denial from the Water Board. Uh, the applicant tried to submit their NOI past the September seventh due date, or deadline. The Water Board rejected their application citing that they were in violation of, uh, local jurisdiction ordinance. Secondly, it was denied for lack of submitting a seller's permit by the September seventh deadline. As of this date, the Planning Department has not received a seller's permit by the applicant. Lastly, it was denied for inadequate evidence of cultivation. If you look on the projector, these are the photographs submitted as evidence of cultivation. As you can see, there's a few plants in the foreground. Here's a picture of a picture alongside a cell phone, um, showing the date that this picture was taken. Uh, picture was taken on August twenty eighth, two thousand fifteen. Here's some more, uh, similar pictures, kind of proving the two thousand fifteen date. However, um, as you can see, uh, this evidence doesn't really substantiate twenty-two thousand square feet of cultivation. It's not commensurate for what was applied for. This is what the parcel looked like on March fourteenth, two thousand sixteen. Uh, yes, it's way before May tenth. However, if you look at, uh, June third, two thousand sixteen, um, aerial, nothing has really changed between the two dates, except for all the grass being dead.
Looks like, it looks like a great amount of snow has fallen from the picture.
Correct. Uh, we don't see evidence of cultivation until in aerial of August twentieth, two thousand sixteen. Here, you could see the cultivation taking place right here. It's still kinda hard to see, but it's right there. Prior to that, there's nothing there. And August twentieth, it's right there. This is what the cultivation area looked like on, uh, May seventeen. Uh, that date should be two thousand seventeen, not two thousand sixteen. I apologize. Uh, the cultivation area is right here, and this right here is a hoop house. These are, um, code compliance pictures that were taken during a site inspection. This cultivation, uh, the hoop house. And, uh, the reason I show these is that there are secondary evidence, which, uh, they were also denied for, was, um, also not commensurate with twenty-two thousand square feet of cultivation. And the staff reporters numerous receipts for PVC pipe. However, there is no evidence of PVC pipe on the parcel.
When were the code of compliance photographs taken?
Um, let me look at the staff report real quick. Sorry, I'm used to, uh, the photographs having the date at the bottom.
Yeah.
Me, too. I believe it was, uh, March twentieth of two thousand seventeen. And, um, so once more, um, they did, uh, present receipts for large quantities of PVC pipe. Um, planning staff, um, could've assumed that the PVC pipe was used in the erection of these hoop houses. However, uh, these aren't PVC hoop houses. They actually have, uh, metal rather than PVC. So, uh, Planning Department found that these, um, the receipts and the photographs submitted are, are not evident of cultivation taking place prior to May tenth of two thousand sixteen. And, uh, that's why they were denied for those reasons as well.
I have two questions.
Yes.
When you did that overlay, I didn't see any difference. Can you do that again?
Which overlay?
When you showed the grow being expanded. Because if you, if you look at that...
All right, so this is two thousand thirteen.
Okay.
Or not two thousand thirteen, March fourteenth, two thousand sixteen. I added this picture just because, um, you know, it kinda looks like work being conducted, but, uh, no, that's just part of the landscape. It's always been like that. Uh, June thirteenth, two thousand sixteen, there is no evidence of cultivation. It looks exactly like this, except that the grass is dead now. Um, and we see actual evidence of cultivation up until August. Here's the fence, the perimeter around the cultivation area. You can see the actual pots right here and some over here.
So that's not the same affected area to you? There's nothing on it. There's, there's no pot there. There's nothing on it. There's no pot there.
It's a cloudy picture.
Yeah, it looks better on the screen. I don't know if the projector is...
No, no, it's bad for us in the folder, too.
Well, I think on the photos, you can look on the August picture, you can see...
You can see pots.
Pots or plants. Something's growing.
But to me, that looks like an area that was being worked in anyway. I don't know.
The June photo, to me, is inconclusive. I don't know what...
Those little blurs could be, or blotches could be growth.
Okay, then my second question. Was, you just flipped through it.
And then, just commission me inter these. I also added this picture. This one is from 2015, from March of 2015, showing that this area still looks like the area that you questioned.
But it doesn't look like everything else. It looks like an area that was being used for something because it doesn't have the green grass growing in that area. And it's the exact same shape of the current grow. I don't know. I mean, I could see... I'm just saying, I just see that area has something going on there. Obviously, we're not seeing pots, or we're not seeing the plants. I get what you're saying there.
So this is March of 2015, way before the urgency ordinance and way before people had the knowledge that that was going to be a requirement. We go to March 2016, the area is still disturbed. It doesn't necessarily mean that just because the area is disturbed that it was done for the purposes of cultivation, or it was prepared for the purposes of cultivation. It's looked like that for an entire year, prior to the urgency ordinance.
Okay, and then I want to go to the hoop house, please. Why do you think that that's not PVC pipe?
Let me try to zoom in.
It's not. There's some pictures that are posted.
It's not.
It's not?
It's metal or PVC.
But the wet picture, well, I'll wait.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, can you look at these?
I can see it here in this photo better.
It's shaped, you know.
Yeah, okay.
Miguel, is there, have you seen any picture that would, amongst their pictures supposedly taken August 28th, 2015, there's one picture that shows a fence in the background and a building in the background? And I have not been able to find any building in any of the other pictures that look like the building that's in the background of...
Which picture?
The one with the horses. Keep it back to their, well, that one, see, I thought, oh, well, there's a building. But it's, if you keep going back to their pictures. Their, no, their pictures. The applicant's pictures that supposedly proved the grow.
Oh.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, the one there on the left? I mean, there's definite fence and a definite building and other buildings there. And I'm not seeing anything from above or the other pictures that...
I've looked at the before. I believe, if maybe the applicant could shed some light on this, but I believe that the picture, the cultivation, might have been taking place around this area right here.
We'll, we'll give you a chance.
Well, even when you said my picture.
Yeah, right, okay.
Okay.
So, it appears from one receipt that they bought 4,000 feet of white plastic pipe. The fact that it shows that they paid only $36 for that, sounds like a great deal. Or $39, something like that. What would they have to show? I mean, you expect, if we're going to go to see the 17.95.165.3C, and that's not supplemental evidence, that's an alternative we're proving.
So the urgency ordinance calls secondary evidence C through K. The only thing they submitted that meets any of those C through K is going to be C, which was receipts. There's nothing else in their file that meets that secondary requirement except receipts. However, the receipts are, in the planning department's eyes, not commensurate with 22,000 square feet.
I'm sorry, I haven't read this for a while, and I, they have to establish either A or B.
In conjunction.
And at least one of the others. And you're saying they haven't shown A or B and not enough to do C? And that's where I would have some question because I don't see why they'd have to have supplies that are shown on aerial photograph. Okay.
Okay, so are there any other questions, Miguel? Would you like to hear from the appellant? Come on up.
Where do you want to start?
We want you to start with, you get 15 minutes to do your presentation. If you have brought us any evidence that is going to help your case that we can look at, you're welcome to give it to Annette.
Okay.
And so you get your 15 minutes apiece, and we won't interrupt you. Sell yourself.
As regard to where the 2015...
If you can go back.
Can you go to the colored, there you go. Right, it was this whole area right here. It's about 180 by 110 or 115. The reason that it was actually moved was per their requirement of being off of the property fence line. So we had to. We didn't want to. We were in here in a nice enclosed area.
And no one could see it.
And it was hidden in, kind of in a nice little hole, you know. Anyway, it was right here in this area here in 2015. But because of the setbacks, put us in the middle of this fence line. So then we just put it right here and fenced it here. Then, they weren't happy with the, on inspection time, when Carolyn Moak came out, she said, "Hey, just change the fencing and you're good." So we then changed the fencing, took it out, emailed her the pictures of the new fencing within the 10 days and all that stuff. In regards to the pipeline, it's funny, that picture splits. If the camera, can you go to the, when it was wet? Yeah, to right here, there's a pipe sticking up that's run 400 feet back this way and across. It's like three-inch pipe. Then there's another pipe right here that you can't see that pops up right here in this tree. Right, there's another riser right here, and there's another riser right here. So there's an actual pipeline running all the way across here with three spigots in the middle of those, that weeds there. I mean, I could get you, I didn't know this was an issue. Plus, I do have receipts. I don't know why they don't have. She won $700 worth of pipe and $600 and all this stuff. But I'm a licensed contractor. I own my own bulldozers. I have my own cow shed. You know, I don't buy much as far as supplies needed to do it. I'm a farmer at trade. I mean, there's a lot of things I didn't need.
Let's go to the pictures with the paw plants because they're asking about where are those located. They're located, that picture...
Yeah, I'll show you where they're located.
When they took a picture of the building, we have like a, an arena, attack room, a horse arena and attack room. Well, that's the backside.
It's facing back.
It's facing the opposite direction where the, all the plants had run on those lines that you saw. And we just took pictures of this area and there was...
Just saying that, it was saying that we were cultivating 2015. You're looking, there, your backup one. Right there, you're looking back towards the arena from the slope that was, that's right here. So you're looking back towards the opposite way. So it was to the right where he was pointing out a whole lot more in that, in that piped area fenced is where it was in 2015. And on the outside, right side. I would have brought more pictures, but the people who took our application said it was fine. I told them I had a bunch more.
They never asked for more. So that pipe you could see runs straight up. If you go from this fence line and then...
Which pipe?
There's a pipe right here.
Right there, and there's a pipe off to the right also.
And see, this pipe right here.
It runs directly down to where we said that spigot's just off picture. It's a straight key like this.
There's one right here, and then it runs out here and down. So there's a bunch of pipe put in for water.
To our well. I mean, I don't know how we would have proved it except for if we would have known to take pictures as we did work.
It's water, it's water, it's water.
You know what I mean?
It's water.
Well, let's go back in here. They also said, like, no paid receipts. Like, we have a, we had to rent, actually, a piece of equipment because my husband didn't have a small and a bucket. He didn't want to use a two, three-foot bucket to dig a small trench line. We rented an excavator, and it shows my credit card on it. It was delivered back. This is what they're saying, is it doesn't show paid. It gives you the whole credit card number, the expiration date, the name and everything. Oftentimes, when you return a piece of equipment, unless you walk in, they don't give you the little teeny credit card receipt. It's just kind of frustrating when we have to go through stuff that's so minute that, I mean, these are actual items. This is a copy from the local town in Angels Camp. We rented the piece of equipment. I don't know how else you give it.
I think, I think one of the questions...
You have a copy. You should have a copy. It's a copy in here.
One of the questions we have, I think you're clarifying that these pictures were in fact taken on your property.
Right.
Which was the question in my mind.
Oh, okay, okay.
The remaining question is, and assuming that this was on August 28th, 2015, and the grass color looks right for that and everything. The remaining question is, are these pictures themselves demonstrating a grow of the size that you were applying for?
Well, also, if you, if you could pull up this, this one right here. Do you have this one? So, it's hard to see. You can see it right here, but...
You can see all the green.
Right here, there's 1,500 plants. You can see it in this picture better because it's color on the edge of it that I had them sitting, ready to go in, that are along the building and all in the front under this white plastic right here. There was 1,500 plants to be planted because we had to move it because of the setback that we had. It wasn't that we decided to put them in late. It cost us a huge amount of money doing it. It wasn't by choice.
Is there enough on the, on the side of your, what do you call it, horse arena? Where you were growing? What's the square footage?
180 by, it's actually bigger, but we had 180 by 115 when I marked it out.
And what does that come out to on square footage?
21,600.
Thank you.
It's right around there.
I appreciate that.
I'd have to calculate, but I know it's close. Had I known I needed better pictures, obviously, at the time of the application being turned in, I would have brought them, but he said they were good, so.
I think, do you have the proof for the water quality control board with you?
We do have the...
I have what I sent them.
When we sent them on the deadline, he said, I called because I was going to drive to Sacramento, and the gal in the office told me, "If it, if it's marked, you're good." And I said, "Okay," because I'll drive in there and give it to them. So we, we had it, you know...
I paid extra.
We paid to have it all.
Can I have you give that to Annette?
And then Mr., gosh, what's his name? Hold on. For the water control board? He told me, let me get his name for you. Hold on.
Just while he's looking. We've never had any violations. We haven't had a neighbor complaint. We haven't had garbage. We haven't had people code complaints come out. Carolyn Moak was like, right on. Like, she didn't even want to come back out to see the fence because she had been there, looked at what we had going on. It's just him and I. We didn't have a list of people coming in and out. It's fence and double fence, and like, there was no need for it.
It's Griffin Pereira. And he said, "Ryan, I'm good with it."
It's what?
Griffin Pereira, the guy that was working on our file at the water control board. He said, "I'm good with it. The county's good with it. I'm good with it."
Well, that was the question, that at some point, water quality control board denied your permit because it wasn't submitted within the period of time that the county requires.
Right, and we have the proof that it was there.
That's, that's what this is showing us.
I think it's just the cross because when you call back, you can't get the same person. And his exact words were...
"I'll drive it to Sacramento if it doesn't count for the date to be stamped on it," is what I said.
And he said it's fine.
She, it wasn't he. It was a she.
But did you ever get anything from him saying, "Oops, sorry, we're wrong"?
Nothing. And then I even talked to Carolyn Moak. She said, "Well, we'll have to look into it. I'm not sure about that. I'm coming out to do the site inspection." So she didn't have any information on that.
When the planning department gave you this denial, did you try to show them that proof?
No, I was worried about, I have this weird thing thinking that everybody's out to crash us. So I was wondering, do I bring it, the evidence here, or do I wait and give it to him? I talked to him about it. I was always straight with him, saying what my thoughts were, you know, in regards to this, because I want to do it right. I wouldn't invest this kind... I don't even smoke this stuff. You know what I mean? It's not, it's not about that to me. And I've been here 25 years and hired 25 employees on my excavation company. You know, I've been here a long time. It's important the way I leave it, the way I keep it, you know, and do my due diligence, too, so.
So it appears that you mailed it on the 7th of September, and it was received on the 12th of September.
Well, they told us that that was fine as long as we had it.
That's what she said, as long as I had the date.
But it's still, it's still our county's ordinance, and that's, that's...
Well, I called again. That's who told me if I put, if it was on the 7th, I would have drove it to Sacramento.
We're trying to get it.
No, undisanated, so, this is me.
I'm, I'm not intimidated, don't worry.
But I would have, I would have drove it were my words, dear.
Oh, I see. So what you're saying is, you called the board before you mailed it?
Before I went. I said, "Because I'll drive it."
I misunderstood what you were saying.
Yes, I will drive it to Sacramento.
And just to make sure, I understand, that was not rejected by the water board?
No.
No, the only thing that was...
He said that he would accept it if, if these guys accept it. He's okay with it.
Yeah, it was the fact that it was, they read it as being late under the county requirement.
Right, he said that, his understanding was that he should have had it by the 7th. And I said, "Well, I had talked to her, and it was postmarked by the 7th."
And almost all of the stuff on the list that we had gotten of the requirements had a date by receipt. You had to receive it by a date or date stamped it, and that's what we went by. And this is why it happened. And this was a date stamped on our checklist because there was a one, two, three thing. There was a million things you had to go through to get here, just like the seller's permit.
We brought that in a month ahead of time.
On the, on the grow that you had to move because it was on the property line and you had to get it within the compliance of the urgency ordinance, did you do that on your own when the urgency ordinance was passed? Or did you do that because code compliance recommended you remove?
Nobody said anything. I just took what the rules were and moved it. And it was a flat spot. I didn't do any excavation. I dug holes to put a plant, but...
You graded.
We actually did it because it was all, it was rocky or level in Copper. There's not too much where our place is.
Okay. Then the next thing on your list, I'm just, I'm just running down this list. Just looking for evidence and clarity. The date-stamped photographic evidence. And you said you had receipts with you that showed date stamping. Did you turn that into the county when you said...
Everything I have in this file, they have, you guys have. And there's a lot of them.
I'm just making sure that you felt like you had the right evidence there.
Yeah, everything.
If you have that...
Everything they submitted, I stuck in the staff report as receipts.
Okay, but you're saying what they submitted was not good enough, correct?
That's what the denial letter says, yes.
What's not good enough?
That's, that's what I don't understand.
Okay, hold on one second, please. Let us, let us, let us work on this.
The materials and types and quantities is not commensurate with 22,000 square feet of cannabis cultivation.
If you have to run it from a well.
Hold on, what is, though? What is?
We're okay. Okay. Did you, the pictures that they submitted were not acceptable either?
The pictures that were submitted do not depict 22,000, or not commensurate with 22,000 square feet of cultivation.
And you're, but you're not contesting that these pictures were taken when they say they were taken? Or that they were taken where they said they were taken?
I certainly have no reason to believe that. This isn't August of 2015.
It's just a matter of they don't show enough to establish the amount.
I think that's sort of everything combined is what led us to the conclusion. You know, we see, I can look at that now and see, okay, yeah, there's the house and the trailer in the background, and that represents the site. It was unclear, you know, when we first looked at it, whether that was the case. But again, we see, you know, maybe a dozen plants here. Part of the problem that we've had, and we sort of recognized that when the ordinance was written, is that not everyone took plants, you know, took pictures of their full farm. It wasn't something that people did. It wasn't until they, you know, the ordinance was adopted, as we recall, very late on May 10th, that that standard was, you know, suddenly a requirement. So we recognize it. We wouldn't necessarily have good photographs of everything. We didn't have aerial imaging at the time, so we provided the alternative method of trying to demonstrate. There isn't a fine line that says, "This is good, this is not." It's like, we're judging it. We're trying to look at it and see, you know, does this meet the criteria? You know, if we had the luxury of sitting down with all 740 applicants and go through their documentation, say, "Well, show me, show me where this fits." We haven't been able to do that. And so we look at, we see, I don't know, there's a lot of receipts here, but, you know, there's different tools. A nut driver, how does that relate to...
That was a greenhouse.
If you'd, let me finish.
Oh, sorry.
I don't know what all these tools are, and, but they could be used for any, anything. We've had a lot of receipts that were provided that, just construction supplies. Well, they could have been building a house. So everything put together, looking at the aerial imaging, and it appeared to us that... So everything put together, looking at the aerial imaging, and it appeared to us that we didn't see any evidence of cultivation in the area. As I look closer now, I say, okay, yeah, it does appear that there was some cultivation going on. Whether it was 180 by 115, I'd have to go out there and sort of measure it. You know, the photos taken in March don't necessarily show the full cultivation area because most plants aren't in the ground. They're, either it still starts in a, you know, in a shed or a greenhouse, something like that at that point in time. The other, you know, so that, I guess I'm sort of ambivalent at this point as far as whether or not there was truly evidence of cultivation. I think that we have probably allowed similar evidence in other situations, and other situations, given the full, you know, range of, we've looked at pictures before that we've seen, you know, there were five plants. There was an early appeal that we had, what, a year and a half ago now, that, you know, they had some pictures of plants, not much more than they had here, but they clearly didn't really depict what was on the ground. And so those are some of the judgment calls that we've had to make throughout this whole process. I would agree that this receipt says, and if the water board said that postage, I mean, our code said they had to be, they had to provide documentation to the county that an application was submitted. This is the first time that we've seen this, if I'm not mistaken.
I haven't seen it.
That, you know, so, you know, we had no record that they'd actually received it prior to that time. It would have been great if they had come in on the 7th saying, we were told by the water board that a receipt is good enough, here's a receipt. We have, however, allowed others to provide documentation after the fact. So that leaves the final question of the seller's permit.
Here's, okay, the seller's permit. Actually, I wish the gentleman who was here for the first two, he's blond hair, he had the plaid shirt, he's the one who said, who took our application on the July 11th. I physically, on the day I did this on the internet, I did it in your parking lot, drove down to the little place in San Andreas, had her print me out these copies. I physically handed it to him. He will know me. He did, because I had dealt with him several times. And let me tell you, when you go in the county at this point on June, it is a mess. There are people and pot growers all the way out. So he literally was like, have you been helped? Have you been helped? I said, no. He said, what do you got? I said, I have my seller's permit you need. He said, let me take it. I said, okay, here's my number for my permit. He knew me, because he sat with us, and he took it and said, I'll take care of it. I said, anything else? You didn't usually get receipts for turning in stuff unless you're doing a business. He physically took it, the man that was in here, that worked for the county for the first two. I don't know his name, I can't read it online.
Yeah, there you go.
Yes, he's the one who, here's my, and it was done on June 30th, if you want to see.
We did it way early, that was way early.
Someone has his name in custom ag, and I can tell you, Spear was the same guy who took our planning department.
He was originally, when we were sitting down paying the money, you know.
I just happened to get to work with him every time for some reason. So he physically took my seller's permit. It was in his hand.
What are you holding up?
This is just the receipt when we sat down, everybody that paid. And he filled out his name, that's the only reason I knew it was the same guy. I was like, oh.
Because he kind of wears plaid shirts a lot.
What's the date? Say it again.
This one is...
Please slow down.
This is the receipt when they took our money. We went in and got in line on the list.
For the application?
Yeah, on, in June 24th or something. And that's when we started following your list of the things you had to fill out. And then this is the receipt when he took the $5,000 and went through our application.
There's some writing on this form.
That's just me, when I filed my tax return the first time. You have to file a return whether you have sales or not.
So this writing was done after this?
That's me, that's my copy, yeah. That's just me scribbling on.
It's your secret passwords and social security number?
You won't get much, go for it.
I think you had to show a copy of the seller's permit when I addressed it, didn't you?
Yeah, it was all three, but I did the one. And I think, I'm not for sure, but when we had the stamp, didn't we have to do it during the seller's permit, that it was all, had to be done? And we did, I went through all three places and had it stamped, and I think that was part of it during that day.
The fix is just business. Yeah, you had to go to like, three different departments to stamp it.
And that had to be done as one of them to get signed off.
I was gonna ask if we could ask some questions of public comment.
This little thing's stressful. While we're looking at this, could I ask the department a question?
You can. Do you, so, let's do, well, yeah, go ahead. This is so informal now that...
I think it was mentioned that there have been code of compliance visits to this site.
Yes.
And the one thing that I remember mentioning was a fencing problem that was fixed within 10 days. Are we aware of any other visits or problems or complaints? Not that that would forgive or condemn. This is the business license.
Oh, we should have. We didn't know.
Okay, and they just acted upon this letter.
Yeah. Okay, so, I'm going to just have you guys sit down for one second. I'm gonna see if there's any public comment, which obviously there's not, so I'm closing public comment. And then I'm gonna go back to McGowan and Ethan there and say, is there anything further you would like to add to this case on rebuttal? No? Okay. Do you have anything further to rebut since nobody else did? No? Okay, we're good. All right.
He tried to walk the lines of all the instructions and all the details, a lot of stuff to do that we never had to do.
Thank you. Okay, so, I'm gonna close the public hearing and bring it back to the commissioners to deliberate and make a decision here.
I've got one question of staff. Am I correct that you do not have a copy of the seller's permit in your file?
That's correct.
Was there any communication to the applicants that you were missing that, and would they please send you one?
Not to my knowledge, prior to the denial.
So my comments would be, I think, it's a borderline case, and I think they've made a pretty good case for where they were growing these pictures. These pictures accurately depict the location and the timing of the pictures. We don't have a drawback shot of the entire amount of growth. I would accept the evidence from the applicant as to the measurements of that, of that grow. I would also accept their evidence of the submission to the water board, that submitting, mailing in with, especially after checking with the agencies involved, whether the mailing is appropriate. I think the mailing is sufficient to show submission, and we have absolute proof of that. And I would also accept the testimony about the seller's permit, that it was indeed granted and brought to the planning department, and who knows what might have happened to that. So I would grant this appeal. Oh, I also think that the receipts given, along with the evidence, oral evidence given by the applicant, that he already had a lot of tools, had a lot of materials. I think when you show 4,000 feet of white plastic pipe, and it wasn't plastic pipe that was used in the hoop houses, that's a lot of pipe that would seem to me to be consistent with a large grow. So I think they satisfied subdivision C.
I won't repeat Mr. Fodder's comments, I do agree with them, and I think all the evidence in total shows, to me at least, that you have met all the rules. I wish you'd done it a little differently. I wish you'd gotten the planning department to agree to using the date stamp on the water department, not just getting the water department to tell you. And a few other things could have been done differently, but looking at the evidence in whole, I think the appeal should be granted.
Well, I think that, not to belabor this, it appears they did have a seller's permit. I think maybe there was confusion when they turned it in and didn't get in the file. And they've obviously proven they sent the NOI to the water board on September 7th. That doesn't quite meet the requirements, but it's pretty close. On the cultivation is a closer question, because I don't think that the photos submitted in 2015 come close to showing cultivation close to 22,000 square feet, just a series of individual plants. However, if you look at one of the early aerials, where Mr. McClure pointed out, his cultivating, it shows up. So if you take the two together, even though they didn't submit the aerials, we do have them. And so I think they've satisfied the photographic evidence of cultivation, and I am not prepared to say that what's been submitted doesn't meet the requirements of subdivision C in terms of materials.
I think there is evidence that they were, in that one picture, I think you can see, or what I can interpret to believe, that that was plants growing along that one building and that you eventually had to leave them. I'm still having an issue with the water board. The seller's permit, I think that you had the seller's permit, it just wasn't documented on time. I think that could have been fixed a long time ago, just by giving the county a copy, which you still haven't done.
We didn't help.
But the water board, a copy of the notice to intent to enroll the cultivator for coverage under general ordinance, well, you have the ordinance there. Constitute a completion application for the agency's purposes no later than September 7th, and provide a copy of the documentation indicating receipt by the water control board to the planning department. So I interpret that to say that they had to receive it by the 7th, or we had to receive it by the 7th, they didn't have to receive it by the 7th, correct?
No. The documents had to be submitted to the water board no later than September 7th, and provide a copy of a document indicating receipt by the water quality control board. I keep reading that over and over again because it's confusing.
And if it's confusing to us, I think it's ambiguous on its face. And this thing doesn't say the document, that the receipt in Sacramento, it just says a copy of a document indicating receipt by them. They've told the applicants that getting its date stamped by the post office or whatever it was is sufficient, and that is their receipt.
That part I get. But ours is, we had to have it by September 7th also, correct?
But she's saying she went to the counter and gave Scott a copy. She has a copy from dated June 30th.
No, that's seller's permit.
Seller's permit, excuse me.
That's for the seller's permit, not the, that's...
The water. Well, I can tell you that, I mean, we can sit here and beat this to death, I just wanted to make sure that we documented well enough why we would or would not approve this, and I think that we've got plenty of conversation out there. So there's at least three votes. I think we go ahead and get a recommendation on the resolution and start going forward with this.
Planning staff recommends you adopt the resolution denying the application for commercial cannabis cultivation 2016-957, thereby upholding the planning director's determination to deny the application.
I don't think we like that, do we?
Not gonna make that motion.
Okay. Peter, you wanna make some recommended language for us, because I think you're going the other way.
We can make a simple motion that we just grant the appeal, finding that they satisfied the requirements of the code.
I like that.
I think that's great.
Or we could bring it back and modify all the language, you know, document why that happened. It's really up to you. Given the timeframe, I think that I'd rather see something done today.
Yep.
So that we can finalize this permit. Otherwise, if we bring it back after the 7th, it becomes, falls into this nebulous area of what do we do after the 7th?
I like the language that you just used. Is everybody good with that? Can I get a motion?
I so move.
In a second?
My second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
You're good.
Okay, so we're not gonna give you any readings about appealing to the supervisors.
You can appeal it if you want to. You have 15 days.
Why? We're nice people sometimes.
I can only imagine what you guys could...
Well, it's all a little glimpse of it. I don't know what you compete, but it's not enough.
We don't get paid, we're volunteers. We get that much. Thank you, you guys. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one item left on the agenda for today. Would you guys like to take a five-minute break and then?
Yes.
Can I get those receipts back?
Oh, yeah.
Actually...
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, get started right now if Commissioner Bocelli was done with his story.
He's not. Fascinating story.
He might even mad at me today, I can't believe it. Yeah. Okay, back to, are we ready? Okay, so we're gonna go to item number eight on the agenda, 2016-1099.
We're gonna start over, bringing the meeting back to order. Item number eight, 2016-1099, for a zoning ordinance amendment, and we are going to have Peter present this one.
Thank you. This is, said ordinance amendment, this addresses accessory dwelling units. The county has an existing accessory dwelling unit ordinance. It requires a permit from the county. It is ministerial, but it requires sort of a step that you go through to, we review it internally, route it out to other departments, comes back, and then we sign off on it, and then they can submit their building permits. State law recently changed, and although our procedure is not inconsistent with state law, our ordinance is. And there's some, you know, minor changes that really don't affect us that much. Most of the changes in state law are intended to affect urban areas where housing costs are really high, but one size must fit all, so we are now complying with state law. In reviewing the ordinance, we've, you know, proposed a number of changes, but I also looked at all of our zones and where they're allowed and where they're not. The state law requires that we allow an accessory dwelling unit in any zone that allows a single-family residence. And so I've gone through each zone, and we're proposing changes to several of the zones, a couple to make it clear that a single-family residence and an accessory dwelling unit are allowed. In the M4 zone, however, we're recommending that we modify that, so it's very clear that residence isn't allowed, with the exception of a caretaker, a watchman's type of unit. Caretaker is different than accessory dwelling unit. There was, different jurisdictions use different word, different terms. Sometimes they're called granny flats, sometimes they're called caretaker units. The terminology used by the state, and fortunately with our ordinance, is an accessory dwelling, so we're using that terminology throughout. We've also modified the definition to clarify that, to be consistent with state law. So, just making sure it's clear that in the RC and the REC zone, that a single, you know, they're allowed there, since single-family dwellings are allowed in those zones, and that they're not permitted in the M4 zone. We then get into the accessory dwelling unit ordinance itself, the, the text of 1766, and there are a lot of language changes, but they're really not substantial. It's, again, bringing in conformance with state law. There are a lot of things that we had in our code that were close, but not exact, to what was required. And then just some of the things like the purpose statement, we actually had some things in the purpose statement that really wasn't a purpose, so I removed that. We added an applicability statement, and then just looked at all of our development standards to make sure that they complied with state law, and also complied with our current practices. So, I worked with the environmental health department to make sure that the review process for wells and septic was consistent with the practices that they do and laws that they're required to operate under. Hopefully, it's all relatively self-explanatory. If you, I did get a couple of questions from Supervisor Lattish yesterday.
Commissioner.
Promotion.
Commissioner, I'm sorry.
We are not promoting him.
Wait till next time. Commissioner Lattish, I'm sorry. And there were three, three separate questions he had. I'll go with the easy one first. Section 1766040S, and this has to do with the prohibition of utilizing accessory dwelling units as transient occupancy. We currently have that prohibition in our code, we're proposing we maintain it, it is optional under state law. And the section of state law that authorized us to do that is 66852.2A6. It's on page four of the attachment of the state law.
That's great, that's all I need to hear.
Okay, all right. The second question, or actually the third question you had was under 66050. We have a provision that if you have an existing home on your property, and it, and you want to build a new home, if the existing home meets the criteria for accessory structure, basically if it's less than 12,000 square feet, 1,200 square feet, you can build a new, larger home and sort of convert that to, the existing home to the accessory dwelling. It's really not a convergence, it's just, it's changing what it's called. And the, the terminology was, it may be approved or something like that by the planning department. And Commissioner Lattish, your question was whether or not that provides discretion. It's, approval by the planning department can be either discretionary or ministerial, but it's clear in this ordinance that it's a ministerial action. And all we're saying is that we have the authority to call this existing unit the accessory unit, and the new unit, the primary unit. And that's really all that's saying.
The approval would be...
It still would be ministerial.
If you have no discretion, they're, they just say, this is what we want to do, and you say, go to it.
Right, exactly.
I see, okay.
The, the other question, which is a little more, have a little more discussion, was under 040J2, and, and the underlined strikeout version, that is on page four, I believe, no. Bottom of page three. And these are exceptions that are carved out by the legislature, state legislation, that say, we cannot require additional parking if you meet any of these criteria. And J2 says, unit is located within a designated historic district. The state law called out located within a...
It's, it's really bad language.
Well, it is bad language, and, and we, we discussed this, Julie and I discussed this at length, you know, about what's the best approach here? The, the, the terminology is, I'm going to blank on that.
I can help out.
Within an architecturally, historically significant...
Architecturally insignificant historic district.
Sounds like a lot of discretion involved.
So, because it's ministerial, I think that's why, why Mr. Maurer decided to actually insert the word designated, to reduce the level of subjectivity.
It's a lot better than the state.
Oh, okay.
The question, the only question I had is whether we should define what designated historic district is, designated by us, designated by the federal government.
Well, and if you felt that just having designated historic district was not sufficient, I propose that we say county, state, or federally designated.
Great, I like that.
That'd be marvelous.
That takes care of all of it.
Then you're better than the state.
Absolutely. The only issue I had was the M4 zone, but you added caretaker, so you took care of any issues that I would have wanted to address, because of storage units having caretaker units on site type things.
Yeah, we have a lot of industrial uses that because of security purposes, there is a residential unit.
You took care of it.
And it's, it's different than a medical caretaker, and accessory dwelling covers all those grounds. We can't differentiate on who's living in there.
We have another commissioner.
Historically, this thing, this thing's had the 1,200 square foot limitation, right?
Yes.
And we've had this rule, what used to be called the mother-in-law.
Right.
At one time. That shows you how far back I'm going. I, I never have understood why it's still 1,200, especially for larger parcels. I understand in the city, yeah, makes sense, but you got a five acre, 25 acre, whatever, why do you want to limit it?
Because it's supposed to be for a caretaker, not for an entire family of 10, and why would a caretaker need 1,200 square feet?
Well, the, you know, it's, it's, it dates back to the early six, early 80s, I believe, when it, when it first passed state law. And, and it started off at 600 square feet, and then it went to, I think somewhere on 800, and then it went up to 12, and it's been staying 12, you know, for quite a while now, probably at least a decade or more. I think that the purpose is that, the, the focus is for affordable housing in the state, and smaller houses tend to be more affordable. And I think that by, and there are, the other finding is that such a unit doesn't increase the overall density of general plan and zoning, that by having these smaller units, we're saying, this is okay, and we're not going to consider it an increase in density, even though you might have two 1,200 square foot homes on one site. That's okay. I think once you get up, you know, larger homes, legitimately you are increasing the density. If you have two, 3,000 square foot homes, you've got double the density on the site. You know, it's a, it's a line that's been drawn by the state, we said, we're not going to mess with it, we'll just leave it the way it is.
I thought you said that 1,200 was not drawn by the state.
No, 1,200 is what the state says that it can't exceed that.
It can be less, but it can't be more than 1,200.
Okay, so, does the public have any questions? No? Okay, go ahead.
No, I got one. Under 17.060070, the definition of accessory dwelling, the next to the last sentence says, an accessory dwelling includes an efficiency unit, et cetera, and a manufactured home, et cetera. My question was whether those two types of units are exclusive, and I think the answer is no, because the state definition reads much the same, except it says an accessory dwelling also includes. So, I think the word also should be in there to make it clear, consistent with state law, that an accessory dwelling is not limited to an efficiency unit or manufactured home.
Where are you? What section?
Right here.
The definition?
No, it's not, you're in a different area, I'm wrong.
Which section?
17.06.0070, definition of...
Okay.
Also includes...
The one that you have highlighted.
Okay.
That's the only question.
We're good. Okay.
Yeah, I think the reason I took also out, even though, you're right, that is in state law, it's like, well, what's the also, we haven't described anything else. We, you know, we describe what it's, what it needs to be in it.
Well, actually, you did describe something else in the first sentence.
But I'm okay with also, it's fine.
Now, is this, as with, is this, does every ordinance that just states general requirements automatically only apply in unincorporated areas?
Yes.
Okay, and so...
Yeah, city, it's its own jurisdiction, they, they have to do their own ordinance, yes.
I'm sure they'll look at yours.
Are we good?
I'm good.
There's no public comment. You want to read our recommendation, and we will put it on the table for a motion?
So, we recommend that the planning commission adopt resolution 2018-026, forwarding a recommendation to the board of supervisors to adopt ordinance amending chapter 1730, 1744, 1746, and 1766 relating to accessory dwellings and finding that the ordinance is exempt from CEQA.
As amended?
As, ordinance as amended, yeah.
Okay, can I get a motion?
I so move.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Can we do one of these first, because that's better than the other ones?
Yeah.
Did I enjoy it more? It was more...
I was saving it for dessert.
Just saying, let's start the day off on a good note next time.
It's nice to end on a good note. Okay, are you, there are no action items, there are no informational items, there are no study sessions, are there any commissioner reports?
I have none.
How'd you do on your mud run?
Oh, I could show you a picture of it.
Uh-oh.
It was muddy.
Okay, anybody else have any commissioner reports?
No.
Okay, then, does the planning director have any reports?
No.
Okay, we are going to adjourn. It is 2:36. Thank you.